My name is David Albright. I am the manager of the groundwater protection section at the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Pacific Southwest Region, also known as Region Nine in San Francisco, California. Welcome to EPA's public hearing on the draft Class Six Underground Injection Control Permits, also called the UIC permits for Carbon Tarot Vault or CTV. During tonight's hearing, we are accepting oral comments from the public. Tonight's public hearing is being broadcast as a Zoom webinar for interested members of the public to hear the oral comments provided. However, only those who are present here tonight will have the opportunity to provide oral comments during the hearing. Whether you are providing oral comments tonight or not, if you want to provide written comments, you can find instructions on submitting written comments on the EPA Region Nine UIC website under intent to issue Class Six Underground Injection Control Permits for Carbon Tarot Vault JV Storage Company Sub One LLC, or on the U.S. government's regulatory website, regulations.gov, under docket number EPA R09OW 2023-0623. The comment period closes at midnight Pacific Standard Time on Wednesday, March 20th. This hearing is being held in accordance with EPA's regulations for public involvement when considering issuance of UIC permits. I expect everything will run smoothly and respectfully request your patience and understanding during tonight's hearing in the event we encounter any technical difficulties. We have taken a lot of steps to prepare for the hearing, and our team will do everything we can to address any issues that arise with the goal of ensuring that anyone who wishes to provide oral comments has an opportunity to do so. We have several EPA representatives here this evening, so let me introduce them. First, I'd like to introduce our regional administrator, Martha Guzman. In addition, we have Kevin Gong, our regional staff director, Emily Pimentel, the region's carbon capture and sequestration policy advisor, Tony Singh, an assistant director in our water division, and Elise Nord, who is an environmental engineer in our groundwater protection section. From our Office of Regional Counsel, we have two attorneys, Nate Bosch, where's Nate? And Stephen Jogil. Stephen will be serving as the hearing officer for tonight's public hearing. I'd also like to thank our contractor ERG, the Eastern Research Group, and their staff, Erin Piterino, and Erin will be keeping time tonight, and Katie Harrison, who's in the back. Several ERG staff are also providing critical behind-the-scenes support for tonight's hearing. And I also want to thank our onsite Spanish-language interpreter, Fernando Lopez. For this evening's hearing, we have a court reporter who will be transcribing all comments provided and will prepare a verbatim written transcript of the hearing. The hearing transcript will be part of the administrative record for EPA's UIC permit review process. Some people have already pre-registered to provide oral comments tonight. If you have not pre-registered and would like to provide oral comments, please fill out the registration form at the desk you passed when you walked in over in the front. After my opening remarks, I'll turn the proceeding over to our hearing officer, who will call on participants to provide oral comments in the order they registered. To ensure everyone who wants to provide oral comments has a chance to speak, speaker time is limited to two minutes. If there is time remaining after all speakers have been called upon, the hearing officer may authorize additional time for oral comments. This hearing is scheduled to end at 9:00 PM Pacific Standard Time. Commenters may provide their name, however, it is not required that you give your name in order to provide oral comments. Also, if you would like to receive a notice of EPA's final permit decision for this project, please provide your email address on the registration form located at the front table. You may also request notice of our final decision by contacting EPA's permitting lead for this project, Email is the preferred method to provide notice of our final permit decision, but if you want notification by regular mail, you may provide your postal address. I will now provide a brief description of the Carbon Tarot Vault 126R project and EPA's UIC permitting process. EPA Region Nine Groundwater Protection Section is proposing to issue four Class Six Underground Injection Control UIC permits for Carbon Tarot Vault JV Storage Company Sub One LLC, also known as CTV, to construct and operate wells to inject and store carbon dioxide underground. The process of injecting carbon dioxide into the subsurface for long-term underground storage is called geologic sequestration or carbon sequestration. Carbon sequestration is one method of reducing emissions of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. The proposed injection wells would be located within the Elk Hills Oil Field, approximately 20 miles west of Bakersfield, California. CTV has proposed to inject about 1.5 million tons of carbon dioxide annually into the four proposed wells over a 26-year injection period. If authorized, CTV would capture carbon dioxide initially from three proposed sources: the Lone Cypress Facility, which is a proposed hydrogen plant, Elk Hills Pre-Combustion Gas Treatment, and a proposed direct air capture facility called AVNOS. CTV would capture the carbon dioxide from the generating facilities, transport it via pipeline within the Elk Hills Field to the injection wells, pressurize the gas into a liquid-like state, and inject the carbon dioxide stream deep underground through the wells. One of the proposed injection wells, which is UIC permit number R9UICCA6FY221.1, is an existing Class Two UIC well that CTV would convert to a Class Six UIC well. The other three proposed wells, which are UIC permit numbers R9UICCA6FY221.2, 1.3, and 1.4, would be newly drilled and constructed Class Six UIC wells. The permits would authorize injection of carbon dioxide into the proposed injection wells at a depth of approximately 6,000 feet below ground surface. After completing a thorough technical review of all information submitted by CTV in their permit application, as well as the operational standards, monitoring requirements, and existing geologic setting, EPA has determined that the activities authorized under the draft Class Six UIC permits are protective of underground sources of drinking water as required by the Safe Drinking Water Act. On December 20th, 2023, EPA announced a 90-day public comment period for the proposed permits, which ends on March 20th, 2024. This public hearing is not a forum for questions and answers, but is intended to give people an opportunity to formally and publicly make EPA aware of their views on the draft UIC permits and supporting material. All oral comments will be transcribed word for word, but participants are not being sworn in. EPA's role during the public hearing is to listen to each comment that is made. We will not ask you any clarifying questions or respond to your questions or comments during the hearing. At the end of the public comment period, EPA will review all comments submitted, including those received during this hearing, and make a final decision to issue or deny the permits. We will prepare a response to comments document responding to all comments submitted on the draft UIC permits, including the oral comments provided this evening. The time needed to make a final permit decision and prepare the response to comments will depend on the volume and nature of the comments we receive. When we issue our final permit decision, we will provide the response to comments along with all public comments submitted on the website, regulations.gov, under docket number EPA R09OW 2023-0623. The final permit decision and response to comments will also be posted on the EPA Region Nine UIC website. Note that since the beginning of the public comment period on December 20th, we have been receiving written comments, and those are posted on regulations.gov under the docket for this action. As I noted, EPA will provide a notice of the agency's final permit decision to interested persons who provide an email or postal address. EPA's final decision shall become effective no sooner than 30 days after our service of the notice of decision. Within 30 days after EPA provides notice of our final permit decision, any person who filed comments on the draft permit, participated in any public hearing on this matter, or who takes issue with any changes in the draft permit may petition the Environmental Appeals Board to review any condition of the permit decision. Please note that the information I just provided, including details on the process for submitting written comments and other details of the UIC permitting process, is available on the EPA Region Nine website and in docket number EPA R09OW 2023-0623 on regulations.gov. I would now like to introduce Stephen Jogil, who will be the hearing officer for this public hearing.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to first welcome everyone here tonight. My name is Stephen Jogil. I'm the regional judicial officer for the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA Region Nine. I know that the permit process always works best when there's public participation, so thank you for being here and participating in this process. As David had mentioned, I am serving as the hearing officer for the hearing, and I'm authorized to receive oral comments on the proposed permit for Carbon Tarot Vault JV Storage Company Sub One LLC, CTV. I'm facilitating the receipt of public comments at today's hearing. Regarding my role, after serving as the hearing officer for today's public hearing, I will not be involved in assessing or responding to your comments. Likewise, I will not be involved in EPA's final decision on the UIC permits for CTV. Instead, I am solely facilitating the process to make sure that all members of the public here tonight have an equal opportunity to submit their oral comments on the record. I will call on people to speak in the order that they signed up on the registration forms. When it is your turn, I will call your name, and if you would like, I will call your name or your commenter number if you did not provide your name. When your name or number is called, please make your way to the microphone and give your oral comments. As noted earlier, speakers' comments are limited to two minutes each. While you are speaking, Erin, who is sitting to my left, with ERG, will hold up a card that says "one minute left." When you have one minute remaining and another card that says 15 seconds left. When you need to wrap up your comments, I will chime in, and also, I don't mean to be rude, but as you can see, there's a full room here, and we have quite a few people that want to give oral comments tonight. So I'm really going to try to stick to a strict two-minute rule. However, if we have time left over after the first round of comments, feel free to register again or let someone from the EPA team know that you would like to give additional comments, and we will provide you with additional time to have another two minutes to provide comments on the record. If I call your name and you do not come to the microphone to speak, and you needed to step away, for instance, if you had to go to the bathroom or if you just stepped outside for a moment, I will mark you as missing on the sheet, and I will call you again later in the hearing. Please note that oral comments and written comments are treated the same and given the same weight in EPA's decision-making process. As I mentioned previously, if we have additional time after all the speakers have made their oral comments, I will invite anyone who wishes to make additional comments to do so. I will also limit the next round of comments to two minutes per speaker. Each person who wishes to make additional oral comments will be permitted only one extra opportunity. Before I start calling names, I also just kind of want to take care of a couple housekeeping issues here tonight. As you can see, we do have a full room, and I want to make sure that when people are up speaking that they're heard clearly and they're not interrupted. So I would ask anyone who's in the room, I know people sometimes see old friends at these events and want to catch up. I would ask that if you want to have a conversation with anyone, that if you could please step outside to the lobby area so that it's not interfering with anyone making a comment on the record. I greatly appreciate that. I also want to pre-apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. If I do so, please forgive me and do not hesitate to correct me when you come to the podium. And again, I want to thank you for being here. And with that said, I'd like to call our first speaker to the microphone, and that is Carmen Hines. I should also mention, it came to my attention that there are a number of people who registered without the intent that had no intention on speaking tonight. I don't know exactly who those folks are. So if I call your name and you did not want to speak tonight, I'll call your name a couple of times. And if you decide later, I'll move on. If you don't come to the microphone, I'll move on. And if you decide to speak later, just let someone know. So I will again call Carmen Hines to the microphone. Ms. Hines, if you're in the room and want to speak, please come up to the mic and do so. Well, I will move on, and I will, the next speaker is Rob England. Rob England. Mr. England, if you hear me, I will, you know, I'll loop around again, like I said, after I'm done with the list. The next person on the list is Ruben Rodriguez. Okay. I think Mr. Rodriguez is on his way. Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you for being here tonight.
Right on, right on. Thank you. Let me get my notes here. Was grabbing a few shirts there. So is there a time limit?
Yeah, there's a two-minute time limit.
Oh, my goodness. Two minutes, huh?
Well, Mr. Rodriguez, I don't know if you heard, if for some reason you go over the two minutes, oh, not over two minutes, if you can't fit your comment into the two minutes, there may be an opportunity after I get through the first round to have another two minutes. Just let someone know. And the other thing that I'd like to emphasize is if someone doesn't finish their oral comments, it doesn't prevent you from also submitting written comments.
Right on. Thank you for that clarification. So I appreciate you guys showing up, you know, and providing this opportunity to the community, but more than anything, today's message, I wanted it to be to the public, right? I know this is a public hearing, public comment, but I wanted it to be to the public. In fact, I might even just switch it up and do it in Spanish. But una de las cosas que yo les quiero comentar a todos los que están presente y a los que no están presentes, es que lo que viene es muy peligroso. Es la realidad. La ciencia no existe.
So that science doesn't exist, and whatever exists, it's what is showing, it's going to cause a lot of problems. Don't allow this to, don't let anybody trick you. Whatever is happening here, it's money laundering. If you see behind us, I wanted to see the majority here, it's, there are people that are in favor of the interests of the petroleum on gas, people that make money, people that make money. So you're going to have to do it again because, okay, so, okay, you already said, you already said. So you wanted to interpret that? Okay, thank you. I'm very happy, I wanted to let everybody know that my testimony, so I want to make, I wanted.
Oil and gas industry, switch it up on your brother, right? And this is what some of the community deals with when they show up to these events. Sometimes it's lack of transparency, sometimes they don't have access, right, to the language that they need, right, in order to understand the issues that are happening. But what I'm telling folks, and I know it goes against a lot of the folks' beliefs, right, and in fact, their culture and their way of life, but what's happening here is just another swindle. There's more money to be made in this industry, and the persons, the people, the entities that are making it is the same entities that caused this problem, right? We're talking about 4.5, four miles away from some of these communities where this project is going to be. I know it has the name Bolt behind it, but I don't see that, I don't see that happening. So thank you for this opportunity. Much appreciated.
No, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. And again, feel free, if we have time afterwards, to come back up. Yep. Yeah, David, was this remind me, I wanted to remind everyone that if you wish to give testimony on the record in Spanish, if you would like to have, we have a translator here, as you can see, and he can translate your comments into English for the benefit of the people in the room. The.
Nomás para que sepan, yo soy intérprete, si van a hablar sus comentarios en inglés, yo voy a traducir en español. Si vamos en español, yo voy a traducir en inglés, pero estás en uno idioma a la otra.
I'd like to move on to the next speaker, which will be Caesar Garrett. Caesar Garrett? Oh, is he coming? Hello, Mr. Garrett. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hello. Sorry about that. I'm on another meeting for the Arvin Lamont CSC at the moment. But I want to bring some awareness to making sure that we have community protection as the number one priority. I know from reading and educating myself on CSC that even the United Nations has disagreed and found that carbon capture is not a feasible way of lowering carbon emissions. It's very energy-intensive, it cannot be done with renewable energies. Therefore, the companies that want to put the carbon in the ground also want to burn petroleum in order to make sure that we put it there, which will not be net zero. And making sure that we put this in areas where it won't escape, in areas where there are thousands of oil wells, like the Elk Hills Oil Field, is also a bad idea. We need to make sure companies like CRC, who also says that this is going to create jobs, and the report says that it's five to 10 jobs, half of them will be full-time, and they let 60 workers go just last August. So we need to make sure that, we're also working with someone that we can trust, because when the methane task force did a sweep of inspections in Shafter, they found 18 leaking wells, and 16 of them were from CRC. So let's make sure that we can trust the people that we're going to work with to protect the community and that their priority is the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. And the next person on the list is Gracia Rosco. Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm short. My name is Gracia Rosco, on behalf of the Center of the Race, Poverty, and the Environment, on behalf of the communities that we closely work with in Kern County, many of which are low-income communities of color. I'm here to provide a comment criticizing the approval of this project. First and foremost, there's just not enough studies on carbon capture sequestration in order for this to come to this neighborhood. Earlier in the workshop, it was stated that this will be one of the first Class Six permits for the geology of this region. Previous ones that have been granted were for saline aquifers. This community is already overburdened with numerous hazardous waste facilities with different oil and gas industries and refineries. They should not be guinea pigs for a new technology that has been understudied. Additionally, EPA has to work very closely with the Kern County Planning Department in order to approve this project. And so far, we will be submitting separate comments for that draft environmental impact report, but there is just not enough information about the different sources of carbon that are going to be coming into this location. There's going to be many different sources of air emissions from trucks from all over the state that are just undisclosed at this time. So all of this cumulatively needs to be looked at and reviewed by both EPA and Kern County collectively in order to ensure that this is a safe project. Ideally, EPA should really focus on its resources in ensuring safe renewable energy rather than providing new technology that's going to continue to subsidize the oil and gas industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. The next person on the list is Mary Cruz Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, if you're in the room, please feel free to step forward to the microphone. Mary Cruz Ramirez. I will move on to Jasmine Martinez. Ms. Martinez, if you're in the room, please feel free to step up to the microphone if you'd like to give comment on the record. The next person on the list is Tim Johnson. Good evening, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for being here tonight.
Get this a little higher. Thank you for the fine work that you all have done. Appreciate it. I'm here, run sales and marketing for a local construction company that has been here 60 years. Name is ARB. We currently have 50 or 500 workers in the region, we're a construction company. And, you know, with a long history and roots in the area, a lot of our families have been raised here as well. You know, it's been about a century or so that we have been pulling hydrocarbons up out of the ground here in the Central Valley, and now we get the opportunity to reverse that flow and put some carbon back in the ground, and I think that's a good thing. And appreciate all the work that CRC and previous to them, Oxy, has done. And appreciate all the work that CRC and previous to them Oxy has done in their research. Our experience in working for Oxy and CRC over the last 60 years is they're a very ethical company, they're integrous. And I think that they're a good steward of the resources that they have here. So I think Kern County on a whole has an incredible history of leadership, both in the oil and gas industry as well as the agricultural industry. And I think this is a great opportunity for Kern County to step into a new industry and lead not only the state, but also the nation in this process. So we're looking forward to all the jobs that this will bring. Both transient construction jobs as well as stay behind operations and maintenance jobs and the trickle on effects that those will have within the local economy. So we support the project. I think it's gonna have a positive impact on lives, on jobs, on the economy and on the climate. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next person on the list is Tim Maria. Mr. Maria. We'll move on to Lori Passante. Ms. Passante, if you're in the room. Oh, there you are. Good evening, Ms. Passante.
Good evening. My name is Lori Passante and I am a resident of Bakersfield and a volunteer. I haven't had full time work since September and I've been volunteering my time to educate myself about your permitting process and about climate change and about the real solutions that we seek together. I want to show, express deep gratitude to everybody wearing a lime green t-shirt tonight because those are the people who are going to bear the brunt of this bad idea. And indeed, my first request of the EPA is that you clarify your jurisdictional divisions with Kern County for mitigation and enforcement. Because the people in the lime green shirts are the ones who should be in the middle of deciding what is going to work for them and what is gonna be best for them in their communities from Wasco, McKittrick, Button, Willow, McFarland, Delano. The geologic formations of this Elk Hills field, this is all, they've been poking holes in there for a long time. And over the storage area alone, there's 350 wells. That seems like a bad idea. And for what? For 300 million tons to be sequestered over 30 years? When it's going to emit 98 million tons. That's three times as much and at a huge cost. And by the way, I want you to be very mindful that when you see those public comments on your EPA website, I can, there's at least one person on there who I know is affiliated with an organization that has received money from your applicant. When you hear positive comments from people from the community, I would hope that they would disclose the ways in which they are benefiting monetarily from giving their positive comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Passante. And the next person is Dave Nowhere. Is it Mayor Nowhere? Nor. And thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the EPA. Thank you all for the work that you have done thus far. Your outreach to the community so that people can understand the complexities of this issue. To understand part of CCNS is to know that CCNS is not an energy product. It will not displace our need for oil and gas and petrochemicals. If CCNS was a part of an automobile, it would not be the motor. It would not be the, the gas tank. It would be the catalytic converter. CCNS is a pollution control method. The preponderance of scientific attitude globally right now says mankind needs to do a better job of managing the emissions from combustion, CO2. There are certain parts of modern life, quality of life, that we all take for granted, certain products that are carbon intensive and we don't have a replacement for those products yet. We need energy to do everything. We need cement, we need rebar, we need all of these things. So what CCNS can do is effectively help lower the footprint of the energy that it takes to power those things. If you've got an electric cooktop, an electric hot water heater, an electric plug in car and you use it in California right now, half of the energy it uses comes from hydrocarbons. By being able to decarbon those things, you can actually lower the carbon footprint of a plug in EV or an electric cooktop or an electric hot water heater. Here in Kern County, we are blessed with the geology that it takes for successful carbon capture. We know reservoir management. We've been doing it for over a century. We have the labor force, the expert labor force to do these things. And this project will stay on property. This is the right place to do this. Thank you very much for coming before.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Nicole Hill. Ms. Hill, if you're in the room.
Mister.
My apologies.
No problem. First, I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to speak on the economic impact of carbon capture, carbon storage and the transportation. We look at the effect that we have in the disadvantaged and underserved areas here. And we need to educate everyone on the importance of clean air capture. While we don't understand everything, all the ramifications involved here. We know that most, for the most part, if we're talking zero net carbons by 2045, that's a good thing for all of us, you know, because like I said, in the disadvantaged, underserved areas, you know, there's a large carbon footprint in those areas. And with that being said, we need to understand and educate everyone in layman's terms of the importance of carbon capture, carbon storage and make sure that the economic value tricks, I'm sorry, sneaks down to those disadvantaged and underserved areas and train people in those areas to make sure that they are getting a piece of this economic value as well as far as I'd say skillable careers and everything else like that. We've always missed that boat. And so with the existence of carbon capture and carbon storage, that would be a great economic impact for those disadvantaged and underserved areas as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight. The next person on the list is Alyssa Reed. Oh, good evening, Ms. Reed.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Reed and I am representing the Kern, Enyo and Mono Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. I am here representing our union affiliates and there are more than 5,000 members. Tonight, I am proud to speak in support of the Carbon Terror Vault as they seek a Title VI permit to begin their first carbon capture and sequestration project here in Kern County. Our council has been a proud partner of CRC and now Carbon Terror Vault. A partnership that started more than eight years ago when CRC supported the creation of good paying jobs for our members as the first oil production company to enter into a maintenance project labor agreement, demonstrating their commitment to our communities. Continuing our work with CRC and Carbon Terror Vault, the Building and Construction Trades look forward to constructing this project with the highest commitment to safety and environmental stewardship for which CRC and Carbon Terror Vault are known. By moving forward with these necessary permits, we can unite and lead the state of California in its efforts towards carbon neutrality. Through trusted innovative technologies and our skilled workforce, we look forward to constructing facilities that will play a role in achieving our shared climate goals and improving our communities. As a partner on the recently awarded Department of Energy Direct Air Capture Grant, we believe these projects make sense for Kern County and our local communities. The community development plans associated with these projects represent actual labor and community partnerships that will be enticing to bring other opportunity to our areas. Together, we are not just building infrastructure, we are building a sustainable future. By supporting projects like this under a project labor agreement, we create good jobs and pave the way for cleaner and healthier communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Brock McMurray. Good evening, Mr. McMurray.
Good evening. Brock McMurray, Superintendent President at Taft College. First, I would like to say that we appreciate you guys being here and appreciate CRC and all the other partners through the process at the level of communication they've had with their educational partners. Next, I would like to say it's very exciting to potentially have a project like this to capitalize on the federal dollars, large amount of federal dollars and the economic impact that it could have here in this area with jobs as well as a number of things that can impact the educational leaders here. And next, here at Taft College, we look forward to working to help with any of the job, potential jobs with respect to STEM jobs and partnering with CRC and others in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurray. And the next person on the list is Metervet Torres. Oh, hello, Ms. Torres. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here in support of the permit and also want to ask that you make sure that it is safe for the community, safe for the environment and that economically it is sound for the people that are in the area as well and that it can bring more jobs to this area. Thank you very much for being here and for having this opportunity for us to speak.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Larry, is it Jansen? Larry Jansen? Good evening, Mr. Jansen.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you've done on this project. I, I'm a vice president for a local company that's been here for 60 years, building infrastructure. Everything from oil fields, power plants, pipelines, you have it. We employ building trades workers. What does that mean? Well, building trades workers could benefit greatly from this project. There's gonna be a lot of jobs building this and as well maintaining it over the years. So it's not just to come in and build it and go away. There'll be jobs that last for years and years. We look at our company as a big success and it's a success because of the people that work for us. Our people are the most valuable asset and those people have union jobs. Those jobs provide them with healthcare, provide them with 401ks, defined benefit pensions. So these folks make up the middle class in this country and in this county and, and we need more of that. So the project's gonna help our folks, it's gonna help our company and it will help, hopefully it'll help the environment as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I believe the next person on the list, I'm having a little hard time reading the handwriting, but I believe it's Lupe Martinez. Martinez, thank you for being here tonight. Take your time.
Good evening and thank you for being here. I certainly am not totally in favor of it, not that I don't understand what the issues are and what we're into. I think my biggest problem is that much of the technology is understudied and should not be tested on our communities as we have, all these rural communities have suffered enough already. So we don't need to have another thing, another situation happen in this area like it has in other places already. All my life as a farm worker and other actions that I've been in, we've always been told it is safe. From pesticides to chemical, my time and days in working in the fields, they used to tell me we are going to put medicines onto the plants. Those medicines, I got to see what impact that has. Certainly, we don't need to have this upon us without it being completely safe. You cannot tell me that it is safe. EPA has already failed for the last 60, 70 years. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. And the next person on the list is Gloria Herrera. Good evening, Ms. Herrera. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm just here to say that we asked from Kenny and the EPA to reject this project. And industry work to Torah just transition to say clean and renewable energy and add more approvals for fossil fuels industry to continue to operate and harm our communities. Carbon capture is an emerging industry with unproven effectiveness and high risk potentials for disadvantaged communities. And yeah, we are here, all of us are hungry for jobs and money. I am one of those. But I don't hear people talking about our health, our future health of our children. What we live in, where you call it the Niagara Falls. What about when you inject these chemicals underground, if they're gonna be affect creating earthquakes? Yeah, everybody says it's gonna be saved. Yeah, everybody wants money and I want money too. But I, I wanna protect my children. I wanna protect their health. And who's doing that? Everybody's talking, yeah, it's gonna bring jobs, it's gonna bring help when there's words they said, we're gonna for better help. A 401ks, you're gonna have health insurance. Okay, health insurance is not good when your health is already messed up. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. And the next person on the list is William Estes. Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for, thank you all for being here as well. As stated, my name is William Estes. I'm a representative of the United Association of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. I represent nearly 900 members in the Kern County area. And this project would be detrimental if it did not go through for my members. Thank you very much. And I am in support of this, this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Gustavo Aguirre. Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight.
Muy buenas tardes a todos. Gustavo Aguirre Jr. Good evening.
Muy buenas tardes a todos. Gustavo Aguirre Jr., good evening, everyone. Gustavo Aguirre Jr. I'm the Director of Climate and Environmental Justice at Central California's Asthma Collaborative. And a resident of Kern County for 20 plus years now. Appreciate so much you all being here today presenting this information. While I was in Bakersfield picking up my kids today, I was on the webinar trying to listen to everything. But just to be clear here. What the EPA is doing here is permitting a first of its kind underground injection for carbon. Which the carbon will come from the oil and gas fields surrounding this area, right? And I think one thing that really stood out in this conversation earlier today was the potential dangers. For the environment, for wildlife and for humans, right? We know that H2S, you know methane gas. PM 2.5. All these different volatile organic compounds, chemicals are persistent in our community and are very dangerous, right? And carbon, on the other hand, is something that is orderless and is something that asphyxiates. You know, engines, internal combustion engines, we seen evidence of this in Mississippi and other places, right? And so when we first advocated for the Community Air Protection Program, AB 617. One, one of the things I will never forget was Mary Nichols, when she was the head of CARB then. Was this is a first of its kind project. Right? And these are guinea pigs, we're going to try this experiment in, right? And so I look at this community and surround like a 360 degree view agriculture. Oil and gas, right? And these are the things that sure. Pump, you know, the economy in this community, give resources to places like this, right? School surroundings, right? But to have experimental technology that has yet to be proven in this community is absurd, right? To, to approve a technology that has yet to be proven. In communities, rural income communities, low income communities. It's a disservice to environmental justice and is a disservice to this community. We don't have to look far, look down the street at Clean Harbors in the permit process there, right? It's a disaster, alright? And we want to prevent disasters like this from continuing in our community. So we obviously a strong oppose of this permit. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming here tonight to speak. We're also getting to the point where, you know, if anyone, don't. Don't worry if you need to leave the room, maybe to go to the bathroom. If for some reason I skip you, we will go through the, you know, those people who did not speak who were on the list. So you'll have an opportunity again. But I want, I don't want people to feel trapped here, waiting, waiting for their name to be called. The next person on the list is. Is it Irma Arando? Irma, I'm sure I mispronounced your last name, so please forgive me.
Thank you. My, my name is Irma Redondo, okay?
Thank you.
I'm here opposing to this industry, it's just industries projects. My business, because we already have so many contaminants that we're dealing with. Okay, so adding more, that scares me, believe me. This project will arm the incremental very serious sickness of asthma, cancer, you know? I already have in my family, children with cancer with asthma. Even congenital, I have a daughter who was born without one of her arms. And I have a daughter with very severe, several positive. When I took my daughter to UCLA and they were structured to Madeira Hospital. The doctor told me, he asked me where, where it was my, the town where I come in the region, I say Kern County. He said, you know what, we have a lot of patients, children, your daughter's age, they were born with missing limbs. Believe me, I was working on some farm work at the time. So I knew where it's supposed to pesticide, but we had to, to work because we had to put food in our tables. Okay, we already with what I read, you know, my knowledge that we already with 25 to 55%. With asthma problems in our county. I do have asthma too, and I have COPD. Okay, those problems are respiratory, chronic respiratory, okay? To my knowledge of us, 2018, 2019, only one year, 17.7%. Of our people were diagnosed with asthma. So by now it's almost five years, you can multiply 17.7 times five, it gives you about, what, 88.5%? That is a big number. My question is, how many more sick people this industrial project with the projects need? To open their hearts, the eyes of their hearts, to see. How they're going to affect our areas, our county. We have increased the risk of death of the chronic respiratory diseases already. I have a son who's always sick with a chronic bronchitis. That scares me, believe me. I, I have, like I told you, COPD and my mother did also. I opposed to this project. Why in our areas is my question, why you have to plan these industries in our, in our area? We already have so many, like I told you.
I'm sorry, if I, if I can interrupt for a second, we're past the two minutes. Just give you a little bit longer and if you'd like to come back.
Thank you. I will. Thank you so much.
I'd be happy to give you another two minutes after we get through the first round. Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone gets an opportunity here tonight to get on the record. And I, and I appreciate everyone's cooperation with that. As you can see, we have a lot of people that, that have a lot of interest in this project. And want to put a comment on the record and we just want to make sure that each one of you in the room has that opportunity to do so. Next person on the list is Sarah Sullivan. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Sullivan and I'm here at the Kern Community College District as well as the California Renewable Energy Laboratory, CRL. To show my support for this project. A pillar of CRL's mission is to evaluate and create academic and workforce development opportunities for our residents in the clean energy sector. The carbon management sector can create new career pathways and job opportunities for our students and the community. Carbon management offers a wide variety of opportunities across various academic and educational levels. From students studying construction and welding to students pursuing degrees in geology and engineering. Carbon management can create pathways for jobs in our community for the next generation of energy workers. CRL has been engaged in developing an educational pathway through the Carbon Management Center of Excellence. This center serves as an educational hub for the community to learn more about carbon management and storage. Through hands-on experiential learning opportunities and courses in carbon capture and storage. The Kern Community College District has worked with CTV. To identify the workforce training and skills needed to develop future clean energy projects in Kern County. And is ready to provide the education needed to build out these projects. CRL has had a seat at the table to hear directly from CTV. On their plans to invest in clean energy facilities here in Kern County. And sees the potential carbon, the carbon management sector can bring by providing high paying quality jobs to our students. And a wide range of educational backgrounds and workforce skills. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Brian Holt. Good evening, Mr. Holt. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Brian Holt. I'm Business Manager, Financial Secretary of IBW Local 428. We're the Electrical Workers Union here in Kern County. Proud to stand here representing over 1,200 Kern County families. And also proud to stand here in strong support of Carbon Terra Vault's application for the Class 6 permit. Not only does this project help meet the state's aggressive and necessary climate goals. But I think it would be difficult to overstate the importance of the community and economic benefits as well. Not the least of which is the education and training opportunities afforded to our area's youth. One other thing to consider is the transitioning workforce opportunities this new technology brings to our area. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak and to stand in full support of this project and our industry partners and Carbon Terra Vault.
Thank you. Just going to check in very quickly with the court reporter, Tim. Are you doing okay? Thank you. Feel free if you, you know, let us know if you need to take a break at all. Thank you. The next person on the list is Renee Jordan. And I'll move on to Les Clark. Les Clark. Good evening, Mr. Clark. Thank you for being here tonight.
Isn't it great that we live in a country that everybody can give an opinion? And it be respected? So, my name is Les Clark. I'm with West Side Recreation Park District. District Administrator. Our district has been on the west side for 75 years. I'm also a resident on the west side for over 40 years. As our family's been here for over 70 years. I've raised three sons here on the west side and the, on the back porch. CRC and the oil patch oversee our community. We're proud of what they've been able to do. We don't have green shirts, but we have blood, sweat and tears and we've built this community. We're going to continue to stand by this community and we're going to support CRC in its efforts. On moving forward with this project for not only a clean air, cleaner air. But also the fact that it's going to bring a good economy into our community and continue to support districts like West Side Recreation Park District. I'm also the special district's president, representing over 90 districts in Kern County. And West Side Recreation Park District, we offered 168 programs in our community last year. And we've done that again with partnerships with the industry and others in our community. So we stand proud and we're very supportive of this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. And the next person on the list is Kathy Orin. Kathy Orin. Good evening, Ms. Orin. And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Kathy Orin. I'm Executive Director of the Taft District Chamber of Commerce. And I'm representing our Board of Directors as I speak to you today. This California Resources Corporation and the Carbon Terra Vault Project is all about carbon sequestration. Unfortunately, it's not all about energy production. We could use that. As members of the Taft community, we know and value the contributions of CRC to our community. Since locally extracted oil has become the enemy. And drilling permits in California have become extinct. It is incumbent upon those who know energy's terrain and science best. To make decisions about what is best for our future. As a Chamber of Commerce, it is our responsibility to look for opportunities. That will add to the community's economic future and the quality of life for our citizens. The Taft Chamber supports this Carbon Terra Vault Project. Because through it, grants will be made available to our educational institutions, special districts. And our business community, ultimately creating jobs to replace those that have been lost due. To what many consider to be a politically manufactured climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Maria Myers. Good evening, Ms. Myers. How are you? I know you've been here early, so thank you for sitting patiently.
Good evening. My name is Maria Garcia Myers. I'm here tonight as a member of the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC. Kern County Council 3272. In support of the CRC Carbon Terra Vault Project. I was born and raised here in Buttonwillow. My parents, Richard and Lusette Garcia, live here. And my husband has worked at the Buttonwillow Kern County Fire Station for the past nine years. In 2010, I started an environmental consulting firm. And I employ 10 full-time employees, some from Buttonwillow as well as Taft. A project like this is very important to Kern County. It benefits the environment and adds much-needed jobs, especially to disadvantaged communities like Buttonwillow. LULAC 3272 has complete trust in CRC and the EPA. And we are in full support of issuing the necessary permits to move forward. Again, thank you for holding these workshops and public hearing here in my hometown of Buttonwillow. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Carolina Welsire. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity. I think this is great. My name is Carolina Welsire. I, I am, I have a degree in chemical engineering and in renewal energies. I dedicated my career to the energy industry. And even though that we naturally resist to change, the energy landscape is changing. And as I had to do myself, furthering my knowledge, we all have to adapt somehow. And I think the change that is happening is for the better. I heard some comments today, tonight against the project. But I like to remind everybody that doing nothing is not an option. And that we have to do something to meet the climate goals. So I feel extremely lucky to be able to work and apply my knowledge here in Kern County. And I'm, I'm really happy that Kern County is trailblazing in the way of renewable energy and carbon capture. And as such, I am evidently a supporter of all the above energy and carbon capture as well. So I would like to recommend the EPA to approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. And the next person on the list is, is it Maria Salinas? Mario, my, my apologies. As you can see, I had to put my glasses on. Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mario Salinas. I am, work for the La Unión Laborers International Union, North America. I'm the President of Labor's Local 220. Proudly represent 2,400 members of our union here within Kern County, Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo. We are here in support of the CRC project. I know with the environmental changes and everything and. All these environment, new innovative technologies, this project would be a good project for, for our community and for all our members here. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Rick Woodson. Good evening, Mr. Woodson. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening and thank you. I'm here in support of the Terra Vault program. I've worked in the industry since I got out of high school in Kalanga in 1966. And. Worked summers for Shell Oil up there while I went to college. After that, the Navy. Then I wound up my six years teaching at Fireball High School. My point of that is those are both oil and gas producing areas and agricultural areas. And then for the last 42 years, my family and I have lived in Taft where I've been at Taft High School. For 30 years as a teacher and coach. And during the summertime, I've worked in the petroleum industry in various capacities. My last 12 years at high school, we started the Taft Oil Technology Academy. So from the perspective of an employee of the. So from the perspective of an employee of the industry and also an educator, I would like to point out opportunities, which have already been addressed here, but especially in the area of employment, the jobs in general that are going to be created by this project, but also I think more importantly personally are those people who are being transitioned out of the petroleum industry due to Sacramento and the effects of that now have the opportunity to pursue and continue employment in the industry with this project and projects like it. The other thing is with the extreme permitting process, regulations and laws, especially in California, I look forward to the opportunity of this all being conducted safely and economically. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you. And I apologize if I mispronounced the, this name. Manuel, is it Carper? Carper? Manuel, please forgive me if I mispronounced your last name. I was having a little hard time reading.
Forgive my penmanship. I'll apologize. I haven't written it down well.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Emmanuel Campos.
Thank you.
Close. Okay, so I come to you guys here tonight as an immigrant and first-generation college student. I have lived in the nearby communities of McKittrick and Taft since nineteen eighty-eight. I am the owner of Monarch Fleet Services and Automotive locally. I hold a Bachelor's of Business in Chicano Studies from UC Berkeley and a Master's in Finance and Energy Finance for the University of Texas. I've worked twenty years here in California and in Texas, managing federal, state and local secure facilities. And I'm a father of six children that are being raised in the community of Taft. Rural communities have suffered and there are communities that have been filled with a lot of the job losses that we've experienced recently in the economy. Most of the jobs that have been shed have been gone to the rural communities and the low-income folks. And I'm here to tell you that I come from a family of farmworkers. And a lot of what I hear tonight is what could be versus what's actually happening. What has happened is we have far more important dangers out there that we need to worry about than what this project presents. The science, we've heard from folks that have made a lifetime of studying this, that have told us what it is and what it could be. We already know that the carbon neutrality versus the growing appetite for oil that's produced in countries that are notorious for diserving their environmental justices and the label perils that some folks have expressed here tonight, Ecuador, for example. And we are primary purchasers of that oil. So while we can't, as has already been mentioned tonight, do anything about, or at the moment, do much about with a moratorium on certain things, this is an opportunity for us to at least affect the other side of the equation. I think environmental stewardship and health concerns, while valid, we need to listen to the experts here, and there have been plenty of science behind this presented. And I'd like, I'd like to challenge anybody to come up with one industry where folks who have made mistakes in their lives and have gotten a second chance at life, an opportunity of making a better life of upward mobility and leaving a legacy, that is the energy sector. And tonight, we have an opportunity to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campos. And the next person on the list is Stuart Heisler. Good evening, Mr. Heisler. Thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Stuart M. Heisler, P.E. I'm a forty-year resident of Kern County and the Senior Technical Director of Anacapa Engineering and Design. As a licensed engineer, my first duty is to protect the public. That's according to the law in California, and I take it very seriously. The energy market is changing, and Kern County is in a privileged position to offer solutions that will not only benefit the environment, but also the local communities. We are proponents of all of the above energy while protecting our neighbors and the environment. This includes all forms of alternate and conventional energy production and the associated carbon capture and sequestration. CRC and Carbon Terror Vault are in the fortunate position to own the surface and mineral rights that are suitable for CCS at Elk Hills, and they have the hecumen capital to operate it. We are in favor of the county approving this project.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Heisler. And the next person on the list is Fitzgerald Gray. Did I, did I mispronounce your last name?
Fitzgerald Graves.
Graves. Mr. Graves, thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me. My name is Fitzgerald Graves, recent graduate of Cal State Bakersfield Psychology Degree. After having an opportunity to hear a lot of other comments and analyze the data that has been presented by you all, just wanted to offer this brief statement. The topic of climate change and environmental pollution, of course, has pushed many communities and agencies of Kern County to demand to divest from fossil fuels and invest in renewable energies. As such, the concern of CO2 pollution has forced also multiple industries to consider various alternative measures to reduce the, the the amount of CO2 that is released into the air. And the concerns of the public, or to, 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 excuse me. I get a little nervous when I speak for people, so I'm gonna try that again. All right. So the concern of the CO2 pollution has forced multiple industries to consider various alternative measures to reduce the concerns to the public and yet be able to meet the energy needs of the general population. The approval of the Carbon Terror Vault permit and the implementation of innovative, innovative technology within the industry of carbon capture and storage operation has the potential not only to reduce the level of CO2 in the atmosphere, but also bring fiduciary benefit to the surrounding communities and of course, the local general public as a whole, therefore becoming a public works or goods of sort. Climate control concerns have mandated that large industries that create tons of CO2 during raw energy collections, production and refinement, must take immediate actions, and as such, the CCS is that action. Although there's a lot of pushback, the FDA has, has affirmed that this is a viable process to use and manage and regulate the CO2 concerns of the communities. And therefore, or we've, we've heard the testimonies, we've heard the studies, and we should listen to the experts and move forward with something that could be a future benefit to us all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Graves.
I do support the permit.
Yes, and thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Graves. Again, I have to apologize for the, the mispronunciation, mispronunciation of the name here because I'm having a little hard time reading it. George, is that Harman or? Hammer. Yes, Mr. Hammer, thank you. I apologize.
I get an extra thirty seconds for that? Well, my name is George Hammer. I'm a resident, a local resident. I actually went to elementary school right up the road and then later moved to Taft, California, where I've spent the last fifty-three years living in this community. The Carbon Capture Project holds significant promise in helping our community address its carbon emissions. Yes, our carbon emissions. The very vehicle that you drove here today emits about four-point-one metric tons per year of CO2. This project here can remove nearly five-hundred-thousand, the emission of five-hundred-thousand vehicles in the first year. That is every vehicle that drove here, every vehicle of the people that you know that's out there. So simply, I'm here to say thank you for removing my carbon footprint. Furthermore, the implementation of the Carbon Capture Project presents an opportunity for our community to lead by example and showcase our commitment to environmental sustainability. By investing in innovative technologies and sustainable practices, we can inspire other communities to follow suit and collectively work towards a more sustainable future. I urge the community to consider supporting this and collaborating with companies like CRC that have the forefront and the mindset of a sustainable future. So I urge you all to, or actually to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Mike Umbro. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for, I'll bend down. Thank you for the forum. My name's Mike Umbro. I'm an energy developer here in Kern County and founder of Californians for Energy and Science, a nonprofit focused on studying California's energy systems. And regardless of our position, one side or the other, on this project, we as Californians share the distinction and honor of paying the highest utility rates in the country and the highest rates for gasoline in the country. And that's because our state has climate programs that want to push developers and the community to a cleaner future. If we do not permit these projects, we simply bear the burden of the increased costs, and we're not allowed to develop our projects to meet the needs of Sacramento and the disadvantaged communities of Kern County that need the economic impact. We not only need permits for this project, we need fourteen-hundred drilling permits that are being held at the state right now. We need UIC permits for traditional Class II injection. We need science to prevail over politics. So I'm here to support science. I'm here to support the EPA. We appreciate your review and your science as well as CREL and the labs that we've heard from today. We need to trust the voice of the scientists that are saying this is safe from initial review, and we need to see these projects permitted because we're moving into a new energy system in California. So there's no way to step into that new system without permitting projects. And there are many other operators pursuing innovative projects in Kern County that can provide clean power to this project, to power it with clean electrons. I'm one of those. So very strongly support permitting and science for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is David Minor. Mr. Minor, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, good evening. My name's David Minor. I'm a retired geologist and a thirty-three-year resident of Kern County. I'm the former president of the San Joaquin Geological Society and a former president of the Kern County Science Foundation. So I am one of those scientists. And I've studied many of the basins of the world. I'd like to give sort of a geological perspective that I have studying not only basins of three continents, but in the last fifteen years of my career studying this basin specifically, I was one of the first scientists to map the three-dimensional survey covering the Elk Hills feature. And my perspective is that this is extreme, one of the best locations, I think, in the United States, potentially in the world, to sequester CO2 underground. And my reasoning is, number one, it's going to be at least a mile down. There's a huge sandstone, porous and permeable sandstone down there that's going to receive this CO2. And it will, it's a huge area under there. When you look at that Elk Hills Anticline, it's an extremely large area. The sandstone is very thick. There's a very thick shale over the top of that, thick being several hundred feet, maybe up to a thousand feet. And that shale was able to hold hydrocarbons in that location for over one million years. I have fifteen seconds, man. So what I would say is this is a very secure place to sort, to store this for people who aren't familiar with it. And I'm totally in favor of this project from a geological standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Now, I'll, I want to take this opportunity to just mention again, I realize it's difficult to squeeze a comment in in two minutes, but once we go through the list, we'll, we'll take a break. And if you would like an additional two minutes, if you've already given a comment, just let us know. And when we resume, we will call you back up. And don't forget that there's also the opportunity to submit written comments. The next person on the list, it looks like that they just put the name, is it Brandon? Is there Brandon in the room? Oh, hi, Brandon. Thank you for being here tonight and participating. Thank you for participating in, in this hearing.
Hi, guys. My name is Brandon. I live here in Buttonwillow. So there's a bunch of people that were born here that likes this place and have fun here. But like, if this does happen and stuff and it does break, then it can probably do something to them and then they'll get caught probably because this is their place, home and stuff, and they don't want it to get ruined because this is their home and so I just.
It's okay. Just take your time.
The other, we can't drink the water because it's going to be bad. And then all the cars just stop and these a bunch of people would, um, get hurt and stuff, and we don't want that to happen. So that's it.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank, oh. Brandon, Brandon's, Brandon's friend?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hello, Brandon's friend.
How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I don't want this to happen because our family, our kids and all that and the overall of the world. And it's, it's scary because all that, all that smoke, you cannot breathe and you could maybe pass or something. So we don't want that to happen. We just, we just don't want that to happen because we want all ones to stay here. That's it.
Thank you.
Go away.
I want to say you two should be very proud of yourself to stand up in front of a room like this and give a comment. Thank you very much. And is the next name, I, again, I may have a little trouble reading this. Is it Humberto Suiz? Sorry, Santos. Mr. Santos, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
My, my apologies.
Oh, it's okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to say I support this project as it helps with climbing and air, air, air. There we go. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Speaking in front of people. I just want to say I support this project as it helps with the impact, helping with admissions reductions, and it also allows companies to come in and give jobs to the local communities. And I know how that tough is because I grew up in a small community, worked in the labor force in the fields at twelve years old before there were child labor laws. So I just want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here tonight. And the next name on the list is, is it Roy Corfeld? Right, is it, or Corfield? Roy? Or is it, is it Ray? Ray Corfield? Well, I'll move on to, is it Orshel? Is it Nyer? Or? Yeah, Orshel, is it Cryer? Or, oh, there we go. Sir, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
I'm used to it.
Can you state your name for the record?
Name is Orshel Cryer. I'm a mayor for town for the city of Taft, City of City Council. I've been in agricultural business for over forty-seven years. And being on a council, I've been appointed by the county to sit on Environmental Justice Advisory Board group and San Joaquin Valley Air Authority Advisory Member. Yeah, but I've lived on a record, I support this project. It's a good project. It brings jobs here, economic value, especially in our state that we're having problems trying to stay afloat. We're in a red in our budgets and we can't support our infrastructure here in our own state. But a lot of people are misconform about the uses of CO2. A lot of us don't realize that without CO2, there's no life. CO2 is less than one percent of our atmosphere. Rest of it is, it goes to the plants, trees and stuff. They produce the oxygen. They use the CO2 to grow. And to produce oxygen to the air that we breathe. There was an experiment, why about ten years ago, maybe a little less than that, in Arvin, California, where they plant, they have an almond orchard. They use CO2 gases on the trees there for experimental. Let's see what, what would do to the trees and stuff. They found out the trees grew bigger nuts and greener leaves. It was very helpful. They're, they're using that experiment to see what they can do to find uses for CO2 in, in our air. But CO2 is very, very, very important to us in our, in our, our life here. A lot of people realize that all the beverages that you drink has CO2, makes the bubbles. And there's lots of many uses in it. It raises Google it up, CO2, what's the other uses of it and the good and the good and the bad, but, but we have to have it in life. And I want to thank the board for your patience and understanding. And I am in favor of this project and please go forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I really appreciate you being here. And the next person on the list is Miguel Altore. Good evening.
How you guys doing?
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for being here. So my name is Miguel Alatorre Jr. I'm part of Green Action for Health and Environmental Justice, one of the community organizers. And I'm here on behalf of the community members today to say that this is not a project that we need in Buttonwillow. I understand that there's been a lot of promise about the economic benefits and the jobs. But I think five permanent jobs is definitely not enough to put this community's health at risk. I think that this technology is not proven. It's not proven to be safe. I think it's just adding fuel to the petroleum industry, being able to operate far past when they should have stopped. And I think that the health of the Buttonwillow residents is more important than any economic benefit. So with that being said, I hope that the EPA does its due diligence in making sure that this project does not pass. I hope that Kern County does better by its residents by making sure that polluting projects like this are not so steadfastly put into unincorporated communities like Buttonwillow because I think they deserve better. I think they deserve a community that's free of pollution burdens and one where they don't have to trade their health for dollars. So with that being said, I'm really thankful for the Buttonwillow residents who had the pride in their community to come out tonight. I'm really thankful for all of you. And thankful for your time. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. And the next person on the list, I believe it's, is it Yonka Zlator? Oh, hello.
Hello, everybody. My name is Elon Caslata and I wanted to read a letter that we are submitting on behalf of several organizations. To express our strong opposition to the carbon terror vault, carbon capture project in Elk Hills. We are deeply concerned that the terror vault project will deploy expensive, dangerous and ultimately failed CCS technology to extend the life of dirty fossil fuel facilities and frontline communities that cannot afford any more pollution. Kern County already experiences some of the worst air pollution in the nation due to the extensive oil and gas activity. And this project threatens to prolong that activity for decades longer at the expense of local residents and the California's transition to true, real, clean energy. So we urge you to reject this project and instead invest these important dollars into real clean energy solutions. We know that putting a Band-Aid on a bleeding wound is not going to fix the climate crisis. This project will derail California's transition away from fossil fuels. The project intends to capture millions of metric tons of carbon dioxide from numerous polluting sources for injection underground. In a depleted oil field that's over twenty-six, over twenty-six years. While Kern County has stated that the project will capture CO2 from Elk Hills field operations, including gas-fired power plants and drilling activity at the field. EPA has indicated that the project could also source carbon from a new blue hydrogen facility. Or hydrogen derived from fossil gas at the field. The project will therefore extend the life of existing fossil fuel facilities and lead to the build out of new facilities that will make the climate crisis even worse and expand pollution for our communities. By keeping the oil field and gas plant operating for decades longer, this project flies in the face of California's climate goals of reducing eighty-five percent of emissions by twenty forty-five. So in short, this is not our climate solution. It's just a Band-Aid and it doesn't reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. So let's reject this project. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. And the next person on the list is Maria Lucinto. Is Maria Lucinto in the, in the room? Oh, thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for being, thank you for being here tonight.
See, hablo solo inglés, español, perdón.
Yes, I only speak Spanish.
Mi nombre es María Jacinto.
My name is María Jacinto.
Y estoy aquí como cualquier persona de la comunidad. No tengo ninguna posición económica, ninguna.
And I'm here just as a member of the community. I don't have any economic or financial position.
No tengo ninguna posición económica ni una profesión. Estoy simplemente, soy una persona de la comunidad, apoyando.
Not any profession. I'm simply a member of the community. I'm supporting.
Apoyando a las personas que como yo traemos la camiseta verde y es en favor a que no pase este proyecto.
I'm just here supporting like people like myself who have the green shirt on and I ask you not to support this project.
Como ustedes no sé si tienen el conocimiento.
I don't know if you have this knowledge, but.
El día veintidós de febrero del 2020.
On the twenty-second of February.
Los residentes de
Two thousand twenty, the residents of
de Santartia, Mississippi, Santar, Santartia, Mississippi. Mississippi, en el estado de Mississippi.
Residents of a town in Mississippi.
Escucharon un boom y vieron una nube blanca en el cielo.
They heard a loud boom and saw a white cloud in the sky.
Mientras personas intentaban regresar a casa, algunos no lo lograron y cayeron inconscientes en su carro debido a la ruptura de una tubería del dióxido de carbono.
While the people were trying to get home, some people didn't make it. That was due to a rupture of
de una ruptura de, de una tubería de dióxido de carbono.
Of a duct, a pipeline, a carbon pipeline.
Esto en verdad es, es un peligro para, para aquí, para la comunidad.
And really, that's a, that's a danger for the community here.
Y para la vida. Yo estoy en pro de la salud de las personas.
And for human lives, I'm pro people's health.
Y la salud de los niños como lo, ellos lo, les pusieron, les pusieron su, su petición, los niños hace un momento.
And I'm also pro children, of life and children, the way they, they exposed there just a minute ago, a moment ago.
Yo estoy de acuerdo de que, de que traigan estructuras, que vengan trabajos aquí a la comunidad, pero que no se ponga en peligro la vida del ser humano.
I'm all for industries coming to the community, but as long as they do not endanger human lives.
Okay, es todo de mi parte. Gracias.
On my behalf, thank you.
Thank you. And the next name on the list is, is it Morgan? Is it Houchen? Good evening, sir. Could you state your name for the record, just in case I mispronounced it?
Morgan Houchen. You, you, you got it, Stephen. Hey, I, I'd like to just echo what Mr. Clark said back there. Where we can come together respectfully and voice some difference of opinions. I think it's what makes America great. One of the things I think that we struggle with is that there's a lot of problems and no one comes up with any solutions. I think we all can agree that global warming, greenhouse gas emissions, that's real. This company, and I'm in favor of this project, this company is coming up with a real solution. Has the capital experience to do it safely, is picking an area to do it where they have decades of E-logs, all these wells to know what's going on under there. And for us to sit here and act like there's some master plan community or residential community sitting on top of where this is going to happen. Or they're planning on citing an injection well where those communities are is just false. So I'm in support of the project. It's a real problem we have. Solar panels across all of our Central Valley's farmlands not going to fix this. We got a problem there. We can't accommodate all that's there as it is. So I'm in favor of the project. I think these guys have the resources, capital and knowledge to do it safely. Thank you. Thank you guys.
And thank you, Mr. Health. And the next name on the list is Elena Navarro. Elena Navarro? Good evening.
Hello, my name is Eliana Navarro. On behalf of the Central California Environmental Justice Network and on behalf of communities here today, I'm going to be sharing some comments. The EPA has indicated the project could also source carbon from a new hydrogen plant. Or hydrogen facility for transportation of carbon dioxide waste. The project would rely on thirteen point two miles of pipelines that will be as close as a few miles of a sensitive location like a local elementary school. This is Mid-Kittrick Elementary School where kids will be five miles away from a carbon cap or CO2 pipeline. Like María Jacinto mentioned, there's been instances of carbon capture or sorry, carbon dioxide pipelines erupting and intoxicating the whole town. This is near a Mid-Kittrick Elementary School. The Elk Hills is also one of the oldest and largest oil and gas fields in the state with a large number of old, old wells that increases the potential for dangerous leaks from storage sites. Ultimately, this carbon capture project will extend the life of dirty fossil fuel operations and lead to the build out of new facilities. That will exacerbate the climate crisis and create more pollution in nearby Kern County communities, including Buttonwillow, Taft, Tuppman and Bakersfield. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. And the next person on the list is Chelsa Pento. Is Chelsa Pento in the room? I'm center. Oh, I'm sorry. Move on to, is it Yuridia Lopez? Miss Lopez. Oh, good evening, Miss Lopez. How are you? Thank you for being here tonight.
I will speak in Spanish, please.
Oh, sure. Sure.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Yuridia Lopez. Yuridia Lopez.
Good afternoon. My name is Yuridia Lopez.
Okay, solamente sabemos que cada parte va a tener sus justificaciones. Nosotros les podemos.
We know that each part will have its specifications. We have.
Nosotros sabemos que tenemos el por qué no queremos, el por qué está dañando a nuestra familia, por qué está haciendo la contaminación.
Por qué qué?
Nosotros tenemos el por qué, el por qué no lo queremos.
The why, why we do not want it.
Nuestras familias están siendo afectadas en su salud.
Our families, their health is being affected.
Sabemos que puede dar empleo, claro que sí.
We know this could provide employee employment, yes.
Pero a costa de qué?
But at the cost of what?
A costa de la salud y siempre de los más vulnerables.
At the cost of one's health and always the most vulnerable.
Sabemos cuál es la respuesta y lo.
We know what the answer is.
Y lo único que quiero es que ustedes analicen y ustedes saben qué es lo correcto.
All I want you to do is to analyze it because you know what the correct thing to do is.
No queremos afectar más a las familias que siempre han sido vulnerables.
We no longer want to affect the families who have always been vulnerable.
Podemos buscar mejores opciones.
We can seek better options.
Para que todos salgamos ganando.
So that we can all come out winning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Lopez. And the next person on the list is Alan Miller. Alan, hello, Mr. Miller. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening and thanks for your time as well and everybody who joined us tonight. Didn't plan on speaking, but just thought I'd throw out a couple of things. My temporary job started about forty years ago and it's been pretty steady ever since. So that's where I want to go into these, these job opportunities and then I'll get to the safety of the project. The term needs to be clarified. The, the temporary jobs are stepping stones for thousands, basically, if this project and industry is successful over decades. So these temporary jobs will be for hundreds of thousands of young men and women to launch their careers in rewarding trade sectors. These temporary jobs that with the success of the carbon capture industry will continue to provide opportunities for existing journeyman and their families for years. Opportunities of apprenticeship programs for young men and women developing careers for a lifetime that can provide for their families. I've worked in the industry and in the Elk Hills area in most of my career and I've seen the efforts by this producer to responsibly manage their safety responsibilities. This project is focused on improving the environment, creating clean energy jobs. Cleaner energy and have opportunity to provide hope for our communities and our future generations. I do see the children here and would not support this project if I wasn't one hundred percent confident. This would be improving their future lives and their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Rosa Cota. Is Rosa? Is Rosa, Rosa Cota in the room? Rosa Cota. I'll move on to Gilberto Acosta. Gilberto Acosta. There is also a Maria Acosta. Maria Acosta. Good evening.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Solo quiero decir algo. Algo muy importante que yo tengo cinco hijos y uno de mis hijos está enfermo de fiebre del valle y por todos los químicos que hay en este mundo y por más que uno quiere evitar que no se enfermen van a seguir saliendo más cosas. Y como todos somos seres humanos lo que debemos de pensar es tener conciencia en lo que se va a hacer y va a afectar a todos.
Be conscious or be aware that whatever we do will affect others. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta. And the next person on the list is Juan Rivera. Juan Rivera. The next person on the list is Brian, is it Adina? May being sir.
Good evening. I am here representing Buttonwillow as a friend and an ally. I am also here representing the citizens that are too scared to show up because of their citizenship status. We do not want the carbon capture sequestration project to go through. We do not want an incident like the one that happened in Mississippi where a pipeline ruptured and the community didn't even know they were being suffocated or poisoned by carbon monoxide. If there is a real way this project benefits the community, then why aren't the jobs being offered directly to the community members? I would like to take this chance to thank I would like to take this chance to thank Central California Environmental Justice Network and the Last Chance Alliance for helping us do outreach in Buttonwillow. Many community members commented that there was no outreach done at all to let them know about this project or the meeting happening today. The Environmental Protection Agency and the County of Kern need to do better by the people of Buttonwillow. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of this community.
Thank you for being here tonight. And the next person on the list is Gary, I believe it's, is it Plotner? Mr. Plotner, good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. It really is inspiring to see all these people coming out to speak their point of view. And I agree that it's great that we live in a place where people allowed to disagree in a forum like this. So thank you very much for the organization of this and thanks for the presentation before. That was extremely informative. Again, my name's Gary Plotner. I'm a 70-plus year resident of Kern County and I want to support this kind of activity where private industry gets involved in working for the climate change. I think we can all agree that that's a good thing when private money and private innovation is used to such a good. I was also very impressed with the due diligence in the original, brought up in the original meeting this afternoon and how much has been done for the protection of the citizens and how much has been done for the protection of the environment with all the research and background. It's very impressive. Hopefully, this will be the first of many privately funded programs that will come along that work with the government agencies and under the guidelines provided in order to advance a little better treatment of our climate. I appreciate your time and thank you very much for putting this on.
Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Plotner. And the next person on the list is John Moore. John Moore? Is John Moore in the room? We'll move on to the next person. Is it Rocío Madrigórel? Good evening, ma'am. Thank you for being here tonight.
I have to applaud that you are here in our community. At this time, we know state workers, federal workers, this is not your normal time to work and thank all the families who drove here also from McFarland. I work for Central California Environmental Justice Network and just like you, we have scientists that tell us the truth. And it's very sad that every single person that has said, yes, we want this project, stands to win money. As the wife of a cement masons union husband, I understand the need for work and I understand the need to provide for your family, but enough is enough. The most noble thing that a human being could do is protect the unprotected, protect the vulnerable. And I'm sure somewhere in your mission, that is your job. You have the education and the duty to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Sonia Sanchez. Sonia Sanchez? Thank you for being here tonight.
Hello, my name is Sonia Sanchez. I am a resident of Buttonwillow. I have been a resident for nine years. I am a board member of Unidos Network, dedicated to fostering community and progress. I'm committed to making Buttonwillow a better place for all its residents to collaboration and advocacy. As a resident of Buttonwillow and a concerned parent, I firmly oppose the implementation of carbon dioxide capture in our town. My primary reason for this stance is the well-being and health of my 13-year-old son, the children of this community and the entire community. Buttonwillow is not just a place we call home. It's a close-knit community where people genuinely care for one another. We take pride in our town's atmosphere. Where families like mine have watched children grow into responsible adults. Our small town fosters a sense of togetherness and support that is rare to find anywhere else. Introducing carbon dioxide capture technology poses a significant risk to our health and the environment we've cherished. While the technology may have its claimed benefits, the potential hazards and uncertainties associated with it cannot be overlooked. We cannot afford to compromise the air we breathe, the water we drink and the soil we rely on for the sake of experimental solutions. Moreover, as a parent, I am deeply concerned about the long-term effects that such technology could have on my son's health and on the children in our community and the development. Children are particularly vulnerable to harmful substances and I refuse to expose my family and neighbors to any unnecessary risks. In conclusion, our town's well-being and the health of its residents are non-negotiable. I urge decision-makers to prioritize the safety and health of Buttonwillow's residents over any potential short-term gains that carbon dioxide capture may promise. Let us continue to foster a healthy and vibrant community where families can thrive without fear to harm or decline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Now, again, want to thank everyone, Ms. Sanchez, and I particularly want to thank our young participants who are here tonight. You should be really proud of yourself for participating in an important process like this. We have another speaker on the list. Is it Brianda Castro? Good evening, Ms. Castro. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Brianda Castro and I am the Climate and Environmental Justice Coordinator with Central California Asthma Collaborative, a regional nonprofit in the San Joaquín Valley. We thank you for seeking public comment as to crucial actions affecting the residents of Buttonwillow. We are here today to voice our concerns and objections for carbon capture and to oppose this application. The practice of reducing carbon dioxide by capturing it and injecting it into old, insecure pipelines is dangerous and will lower the quality of life for people residing in its vicinity. There is no history of environmental or human safety for this kind of project. There are far better and less costly ways to sequester carbon and protect our environments such as regenerative agriculture, electroelectric hydrogen powered by wind and solar, and investing in net zero emission energy. A carbon capture plant requires 12 to 40% more energy kilowatts per hour produced than a plant without CO2 capture. This threatens our climate by perpetuating the use of fossil fuels that pollue our atmosphere while pretending to benefit the environment. It is a risk to public health by increasing the emissions of other pollutants such as nitrogen, ozone, methane and particulate matter. Today, we learned and it was acknowledged, the only solution for this is to have CRC pay more money to incentivize grants to go into our communities, which will then be yet another layer of burden to have the community produce plans to reduce these emissions. The Central Valley is at the top of the list for the worst air pollution in the nation. We're one, and I want you, everybody in this room, to keep in mind Brandon and his two friends that came up here just a minute, that were brave enough to disclose their opinion on this matter. One in six children have asthma, the highest in the state, in the Central Valley. An asthma prevalence across the valley has reached as high as 20% in school-aged children. This project will also further the risks of long-term health effects for already polluted and burdened communities. Furthermore, there is a lack of public safety protocols in place to protect residents from a disaster that is imminent to take place when using old, insecure pipelines near open leaking oil wells, which we are surrounded here in Kern County. And I want to mention that there are currently leaking oil wells in our county and you are asking this community to trust those same operators within this project.
Ms. Castro, I'm going to have to interrupt you for a second. We're well beyond the two minutes. If I could just have you quickly wrap up and like I said, if you want another opportunity, I'm quite sure
I will wrap up my statement.
Great, thank you.
If I could just mention, we urge you to please consider public safety and the short and long-term health effects of the residents of Buttonwillow and frontline communities by not bringing carbon capture into our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. So everyone, before we take a break, I am going to read off some of the names of the people that we skipped just in case they had stepped out of the room when I called their name. After we finish with that, we're going to take a little break, maybe about a 10, 15-minute break and then if anyone, even if you've already spoken, you can put your name back in for another two-minute slot. So with that said, I'd like to call Carmen Hines to the microphone. Carmen Hines? I'll move on to Rob England. Rob England, if you're in the room, please feel free to step up to the microphone. Moving on to Mary Cruz Ramirez. Mary Cruz Ramirez. Moving on to Jasmine Martinez. Jasmine Martinez. Moving on to Tim Muriel. Tim Muriel. Moving on to Roy, is it Corfield? Roy Corfield? Rosa Cota? Rosa Cota? Gilberto Acosta? Gilberto Acosta? Juan Rivera? Juan Rivera? And John Moore? John Moore? Okay. So as promised, everyone, we're going to take, let's say it's about 8:15 right now, about a 10-minute break. So we'll go back on record at 8:25 and we will be off the record currently. Thank you. We have, yeah. So we're just adding, just add yourself. Is it Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor.
Pleased to meet you.
Well, thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor.
And representing people to get top for 28.
Wow, congratulations. Yeah, congratulations.
Very proud to live there and have raised my family.
Yep. Well, from San Francisco, I've worked out of there, San Francisco a lot.
Was there, right?
Yeah. I've been in San Francisco for 30-plus years, but originally from Chicago.
I did do some traveling here.
I did.
Well, I'm glad you made the trip. You did a good job.
No, thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you. Right. Butchered a few names, but all I can do is apologize for my ignorance. Hello, hello, everyone. It's 8:25. And we have about five or six speakers, so if everyone can go back to their seats, and I'm going to just ask, if anyone wants to continue their conversations, I appreciate the camaraderie here, but if you can take the conversations out into the hallway, greatly appreciate it. And I'd like to move on and call up our next speaker. And again, as I mentioned at the beginning of this proceeding, we're going to allow people another two minutes. And so I would like to call up Brianda Castro. Ms. Castro, thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you for providing me the extra time to finish my statement. I would like to touch on a topic that was presented today at the workshop, which we are also grateful for the information that was provided. A constant theme in the workshop, as I noticed, was the need for constant monitoring and data collection. For this to be a process that is community beneficial and driven and public-facing, we feel it is necessary for there to be third-party monitoring and for there to be guidelines that allow community-based organizations to also conduct their own monitoring within these facilities. Having that data on the website from CRC is great, and it's awesome that it's available to the community. However, touching back on my previous statement, knowing that there have been operators that have failed the community once and again, we feel that adding this extra layer of protection is definitely crucial if a program like this is going to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. Folks, if I can ask all the little side conversations along the wall, just to move out into the hallway, just so, because I can actually hear the conversations up here, and I just don't want to be disrespectful to the to the speakers, but appreciate it. The next person on the list is Woody Little. Good evening, Mr. Little. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you all so much for being here as well. My name is Woody Little. I'm with the Last Chance Alliance. We have over 900 representatives from local, statewide, national, and international organizations that are concerned by the real impacts fossil fuel production on our health and climate. And I'm here today mostly in support of our members, like Central California Environmental Justice Network and CRPE and Oil and Gas Action Network, but thought I'd add my piece as well. In a personal capacity, here's how I see it. If you have lung cancer, your doctor does not prescribe filtered cigarettes. They tell you to quit smoking. That's what CCS is, not exactly, but I think there's historical and real parallels. The purpose of this project, in my view, is not primarily to fight climate change. The purpose of this project is for an oil company to prolong oil production at Elk Hills and create a new revenue stream to support its core business model, oil production. That is in direct contravention of the state's climate goals, which call for an 85% direct reduction in emissions, not a reliance on CCS as a core strategy for fighting climate change. Nobody's saying that when it comes to oil and gas, we need to quit cold turkey, not even the groups I work with, despite what you might hear from some folks. We believe we need a managed transition and a lot more investment in real solutions that create real clean energy jobs and direct financial support for workers in local governments. But the last thing that we should be doing right now, as we see public health consequences mounting in communities like Buttonwillow, as we see climate impacts mounting around the world, is to allow ourselves to get hooked through a new fossil fuel marketing campaign on a hip, rebanded version of the same dangerous product. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Is it Ilanka Zlotar? Thank you again, Butter, for being here tonight.
Hi, thanks, Ilanka. I just wanted to touch on some things that I heard from the audience today. Like, I heard some people say, you know, "Thank you for reducing our cars' emissions out of our communities." And, you know, just to sort of clear the record on that, carbon dioxide is only one component of what comes out of those smokestacks. So even if you took away all the carbon dioxide coming out of those smokestacks, you would still be having, you know, particulate matter, which is what makes people sick. You'd still be having ozone. You'd still be having volatile organic compounds and other toxics coming out of those same facilities. So just because you're capturing one piece of that pollution, while you need to actually increase the amount of energy, because it takes a lot of energy in order to put that stuff underground, well, now you're burning more energy, and you're only capturing one piece of the pollution. So your net pollution of toxics, particulate matter, and all those criteria pollutants is actually increasing, not decreasing. So let's just be clear about what is real and what is happening with this project. It's not, you know, carbon dioxide is one part of it. The other thing, as like many other people have said, is that the oil and gas corporations that are in this area have not been good players. Every time we look, we find leaking wells. There's tens of thousands of idle wells, orphaned wells, all around the state that they do not have the money and they do not intend to ever plug up properly. And those are leaking today, and they're going to continue to leak. And these are the very same people who are turning around and asking us for more permits so that they can keep doing more and more projects that they don't intend on ever closing up. Like, this is a track record, right? Like, we've seen this. Like, I encourage all of you to do your research. Go to CalGEM's website and look for where are those idle oil and gas drilling wells? How long have they been idle? They're all over this place, and they have no intention of plugging them up. So why would we give those same people an allowance for even more different projects? Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Sylvia Romano. Ms. Romano, thank you for being here.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon to everyone.
Realmente quiero hacer en esta noche una observación.
I would like to make an observation on this night.
Agradezco la oportunidad de que ustedes estén aquí.
I appreciate that you are here.
Pero realmente me gustaría ver un foro comunitario donde se vea la equidad y la inclusión reflejada en este lugar.
What I would like to see is a community forum, so we can see the inclusiveness and equity in this.
Me gustaría ver alcances informativos adecuadas para nuestras comunidades agrícolas, campesinas. Informativos o información adecuada.
I would like to have information, adequate information, provided to the farm-working communities.
Para nuestras comunidades agrícolas, campesinas, y vulnerables de todo este condado.
For our farm-working agricultural communities, and we're vulnerable to everything.
Me gustaría ver transparencia acerca del contexto completo de este proyecto y sus efectos.
I would like to have full transparency about this project and all its defects.
Vi una presentación de un tema que para mí es sumamente complejo, donde se hablaron cinco minutos acerca del proyecto.
I saw a presentation where it was very complex for me, and they spoke for five minutes about the project.
Me gustaría que integraran esas comunidades segregadas que no tienen una voz.
I would like to incorporate those communities that do not have a voice.
Por falta de una información adecuada.
Due to lack of adequate information.
Donde se le hagan ver los beneficios y agravios de estos proyectos.
Where they can be shown the pros and cons of these projects.
Alguien hablaba de educación informativa. Me gustaría ver eso.
Someone earlier spoke about informative education. I would like more of that.
Que se diga a quién van dirigido esos trabajos, si es a las comunidades vulnerables o a un sector determinado.
Let them say who's going to lead those projects that will lead the community in a vulnerable... Let them say who's gonna lead those projects that will lead the community in a vulnerable position.
Quienes serán las personas que puedan aplicar a estos trabajos?
Who are the people who can apply for these jobs?
Si las comunidades agrícolas, que son las que mayor representan este condado.
Can the communities, the agricultural communities that are most represented this county.
Estarán potencialmente incluidas dentro de estos desarrollos de proyectos?
Are they also included in a potential development of these projects?
Me gustaría saber si estos proyectos ya fueron desarrollados en otras ciudades. ¿Cuáles han sido los beneficios?
I would like to know if these projects have already been developed in other cities, and if so, what were the benefits?
Si han logrado tener cero emisiones de carbono. Si han logrado obtener cero emisión en carbono.
Have they achieved zero emission, carbon emission?
Y cuál ha sido el incremento económica en estos lugares.
And what has been the incremental growth in these communities?
Thank you. And the next person on the list is Lurie Passante. Hello again, Ms. Passante.
Thank you for this additional opportunity. Five whole jobs. Five whole jobs. That's what this, according to their own application, is what this project is gonna net the community. Five whole jobs. One, two, three, four, five. You know what's gonna get us twelve thousand jobs? Plugging oil wells in Kern County alone. Plugging oil wells. If you want jobs, ask CRC to pay for that. And by the way, we haven't even talked about water. This project, according to their report, their application, seventy-five acre feet for the first eighteen months of construction and twenty acre feet for every year thereafter. And I would like to see that verified and expanded upon, because we are only having less and less and less water. And we can't continue to fool ourselves about the ways in which water rights have benefited the people who you saw promoting this project tonight and leaving behind close to four hundred communities across the Central Valley who can't drink their water. And yet we're gonna use it for this project? Makes no sense to me.
Thank you, Ms. Passante. And the next person on the list is Mayor Dave Nor. Hello again, Mayor Nor.
Thanks again for giving us the additional two minutes so we can all offer our comments. You're right, I am Mayor Dave Nor, Mayor of the City of Taft. I've been re-elected to represent the people of City of Taft five times. I've represented them since two thousand and four. I have lived in the City of Taft since nineteen ninety-one, excuse me, and I've worked in the oil industry beginning in nineteen eighty-one. I've been out there on producing properties throughout the San Joaquin Valley for forty-two years, next to the wellhead, next to every piece of equipment utilized in the production, working for the same producers that are in charge of and monitor and take care of the reservoirs that are doing it today. I have been trained and retrained and updated. Their emphasis on safety, on quality, efficiency, and environmental stewardship in this industry is second to none. Regarding how close this facility is to the McKittrick School and the children, well, I have skin in that game. My three grandchildren, who just outside of Bell Ridge Oil Field, for six generations have raised cattle out there, my three grandchildren, Manny Campos's four children all attend McKittrick School. That's seven kids. That's ten percent of the entire student body of the City of McKittrick School. We support the school. We support the project. We love our children. Above and beyond anything else, we would never intentionally put them in harm's way. And then lastly, what I want to say is, in the forty-plus years I've worked in this industry, I have never worked with a more diverse workforce than is in this industry today. Men, women, Latino, Black, Oriental, LBGTQ, second chancers, all working side by side, shoulder to shoulder, day in, day out, in order to get a job done, get it right, and provide for their families, and provide a critical component of everybody in this room and everybody's quality of life. I support this project. I support the science. I support the history of the people behind it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last speaker on the list is Walter Slade. Good evening, Slade. I know you've been here for quite some time, so thank you for your patience.
Thank you for letting me speak. I had not intended to speak this evening, but there were some comments I wanted to make. I've been to several of the meetings concerning these projects, and I'm not one to take things for granted. So I, like many of you, I imagine, I went out and did my own research. I got on the internet, got books read up. Similar projects have been done in the past in other states, and I must say, I support CRC. I believe in what they are doing, and I believe they are doing it right. We need clean air. And if we don't do something now, it only gets worse. And not only will it get worse, the cost down the line will be much, much more. So I am in support, and CRC, I think you're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. That was the last person on our list. It's eight forty-two. I'm gonna kind of make a last call if anyone else in the room wanted to put a comment on the record. Thank you. Thank you. With that said, what we'll do is, we're gonna take a little break, and then I'm gonna come back on the record in about ten minutes. It's about eight forty-three right now. I'll come back on the record at about eight fifty-five. Oh, you have a... Sure, sure. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Cesar Aguirre, and I'm happy that the mayor of Taft is here. I wanna read a spill report that happened on the twenty-sixth, so just a few days ago. So per the reporting party, a Calgem inspector during the routine inspection discovered the leak, so an inspector, not the operator or owner who had access previously. This leak was in the Jameson Trust lease in the Midway Sunset Oil Field in Taft. They discovered the pipeline had three clamps installed, meaning the operators knew there was a leak and tried to close it off in inadequate way. So these three clamps were there and show that they were trying to stop it, but they were not certain if it was stopped because the pipeline was submerged in oil. It is unknown if the blue line is impacted, and it appears to be stopped and contained, but the reporting party cannot know that because the pipeline is submerged in oil. If you look at the spill reports, a lot of these things happen quite often, especially here in Kern County. So this is the reality of what living close to these types of operations are, and we know from studies that have been done just, I think, in two thousand and twenty, shows that living within a distance near oil and gas infrastructure or OGI can affect public health. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we are gonna take a little break here, and then I'm gonna go back on record. And at that time, if anyone changes their mind and wants to speak, we have a little bit more time. Then I will give closing remarks and we'll close up the hearing. So it is now eight forty-five. We'll go back on record in about ten minutes, eight fifty-five. And again, if anyone changes their mind and wants to add additional comments on the record, just let me know. And for now, we'll go off the record. Thank you. And if anyone would like to, this would be your last chance, if anyone would like to add an additional comment on the record, please feel free to step up to the microphone and state your name for the record, and we'll give you two minutes. It doesn't appear as though anyone wants to give an additional comment on the record, so since there are no further comments, I'm gonna conclude this public hearing. This public hearing is now concluded, and I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and participating in this really important process. I just want to give a reminder that the comment period is open through Wednesday, March twentieth. You may still submit comments on regulations.gov under docket number EPA-R09-OW-2023-0623. The hearing is now closed, and I want to thank again everyone for participating and being very cooperative tonight. And I wish you all a very good evening. Thank you.